I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call please.
Mayor Hollis.
President.
Councilor Gerson.
Present.
Councilor Trask.
Present.
Councilor Gorley.
Present.
Councilor Coleman. Councilor Sanchez.
You're.
Councilor Richards.
Present.
Other representatives have six presidents with one absence. The Councilor Coleman will not be here based on personal matter. Uh, tonight, do we have to read anything or start online or just?
No.
Okay.
There's anybody online.
Today we'll move on to the property discussion. Uh, uh, like the sands of an hourglass.
We're recording. We're not using that right now. We're not recording.
We're using that.
Oh, yeah.
Uh. Essentially, um, in front of you is a letter, uh, that you may or may not choose to send to the county. Um, and some back and forth emails between, uh, county. Um, there was some clarifications and some discussion about moving forward. Um. Again, uh. You have an option in front of you in order to try and convince the county not to simply sell the old mill property to the highest bidder. Uh, there are certainly concerns that anybody could come in, slap down $5 and walk out with the property. Uh, the issue, of course, is that not all of the property has NFA and you may end up with a developer who is not, um, experienced in dealing with cleanup sites. Uh, so in some emails back and forth that the mayor had, um, uh, essentially, if we have concerns, the county would like to know your concerns and your wishes in writing. Otherwise, it's simply going to go to the highest bidder. Uh, so one of, uh, a potential purchasing party met with us on Friday. They had some questions about the cities and where the city stands. Um, and they had an attorney who drafted a letter and, um, is in front of you for your consideration and your signature. This developer has a lot of experience in developing properties that have cleanup, uh, issues. Um, and I think the attorney put that, spelled that out for you in this letter. So, um, if you're interested in sending this, we can do that. If you're not, we don't have to and we can just let it be. I guess that's kind of where we're at.
Not getting into the lengthy conversations I had with Mr. Tucker. Um, anyway, we were one-sided, but anyway. Um, basically the gist I got from Mr. Tucker is he's tired, he care less anymore and he's ready just to wash his hands. And on February 4th, if I'm not correct, somebody walked in for five bucks, it's theirs. And that's where he's going with this. But that's a concern of mine. No, I really, I told Mr. Tucker that anybody with a right mind would not buy this property at all without cleanup. And he said, oh yeah, there's people out there that'll buy it. But the thing that's concerning with my conversation with him was he basically said, well, they'll just develop on what's clean and then we'll just get back what they don't, what is not clean. Which means, okay, we'll get a dresser. I'm sorry. I'll use that as an example. And they'll just kind of develop a little pod here, a little pod there and then we'll close the rest and have a nice day. Now we've got another mess on our hands and they got right back on their plate. That was the consensus I got with Mr. Tucker. Um, he wants to know what we want to do as a council. Do we want to put it on upper option or not upper option? And he wants us to send a letter back and he wants us to get down on our knees and beg for forgiveness and get apology letter. He wanted everything else in the world, but I don't think we've done anything wrong in my opinion. And so I think that if they go ahead with auction, they're, in my opinion, they're just going to, if somebody shows up and gives them five bucks, they may sell it. My backfire on it said. In my opinion, I don't think anybody's going to buy it. I don't think anybody with the right mind would buy it. It's a good idea. Must have heard something like a dresser that thinks that they'll make, take advantage of what they get and then wash their hands of the rest. We don't need that in our community. So.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I think for, you know, what they say and what they do is different things, but I thought that they were going to put a minimum on it for the sale. That's the way I heard it. Of course, we don't know how, as nice as I can be, what they meant. And so I thought that they were going to put, I'll just throw a number out there, $500,000. And then that's, that was the limit, the lowest that they could go. That's what I heard.
That's what I was understanding too, but in that conversation, uh, he was so frustrated. I think he's just open to anybody who wants to give a bid and he's got a motive.
So who knows? If I can interrupt. So because they put the property out for bids previously and they assigned a dollar value to that, this time around, it can only go for a certain, it can't go any lower than a certain percentage of their initial valuation. I don't remember what those numbers are. But I believe the minimum bid on it this time is, is over $400,000, just to clarify.
I would think so.
And I think that's an ORS requirement.
Yeah.
Well, and for us, we have to be very clear. He, the mayor is exactly right. This is exactly what we talked about when we had the meeting with them. You're going to put three different sections in, you're going to build homes in it and then all of a sudden, oh, we're done. And then what have we got? We've got another 100 acres that are sitting there that are contaminated and we can't do anything about it. And then we're going to have 100 homes over there beyond the tax rules, which is a good thing. But then we're going to have 100,000 or whatever that number is, 70,000, 90,000, whatever it is, we're going to, we're going to be sitting there with contaminated property that nobody's going to touch.
My question back, if somebody buys it, let's say $500,000, that just basically says warehouse is off the hook now. Is that not correct?
So I don't believe, I think once you're considered a P O P, you are a P O P in perpetuity until something, until the EPA or DEQ relieves you of that or a judge, uh, the courts relieve you of that, of that liability.
I know, uh, Mr. Tucker is throwing the blame back on us again, that our runoff is causing a lot of the problems and that's not true at all.
DEQ's done studies, they've, they've analyzed the runoff going in and they've analyzed what's coming out and they are completely, two completely separate things. So.
I think we need to protect this act that we use that for runoff and we need to keep it that way. And so whatever happens to that property, it's in our best interest to make sure that that happens. I have to wonder if we, if we have some ownership in this dialogue because of the rush to get this done. Um, it contributes to part of the miscommunication that's been occurring. If that's, um, because I don't think it's in the best interest to, um, let the parties that created the damage to the property off the hook. We have to protect whoever, if we want that property, that they hold the ownership of the mess cleanup. And I don't know that that can happen. If anybody buys it, because I've now heard two different stories. I've heard that, that they no longer have to do it or that they do have to do it. We need to clarify that. You know, does that transfer or not? The mess cleanup, the responsibility, you know, and so, and, and what is in fact the timeline for this? Because this property isn't, this isn't yesterday's problem. This isn't a one-year problem or two-year. This is an ongoing long-term problem since the mill was there. And, um, so I don't feel any emergency to get it done and yet I feel that we've kind of pushed that to make that happen. And so now we have this relationship with the county that's creating this very unhealthy communication that's going on. And, and it's been a lot of work on our staff and a lot of work on our behalf of the counselors and, um, our mayor and everything to push this now. And I don't know, is, is it truly in our best interest to push this particular issue now? Or does it really hurt us to go ahead and wait another year when we have so many other projects in front of us? Frankly, and I'm, I'm going to step over the lines here. My biggest concern is Main Street because that's what people see when they come into town. That's what I hear 24/7 from community members is Sweet Home needs a facelift. And now we're down on a side street going down to a lovely spot that's going to be a beautiful park eventually, but you have to drive through Main Street to get there. My priority is still Main Street. Because people aren't going to drive through Sweet Home to get there until Sweet Home is fixed. And so I, I just kind of, that, that's where I'm at.
I don't just focus, and I 100% agree with you on downtown Main Street. Don't get me wrong. I think it's very important that we use something for downtown and we move that forward. My position is I got to look at the entire city of Sweet Home, not just downtown. Okay? This mill property issue has been going on not just for one year, two years, five years. This mill property has been going on for a lot of years.
Sure.
If we keep kicking the can down the road, the mill property will never get done. We're just giving another problem to the next council, to the next council, to the next council. I get conflicting stories that commissioners are saying, oh yeah, warehouse, yeah, they're coming to the plate and they're working on it and they're cleaning and they're doing it. But then I hear DEQ and all these other people saying, no, they're not. Nothing's happening. So what's the story? What is the truth? And I honestly believe that we don't, I don't necessarily think you have to waste a lot more time. I think we're trying to get something accomplished in our local inner circle with our county commissioner and with us and in meetings and everything we're doing and we're just spinning wheels. I think the only way that, I think, maybe if I'm wrong, but I think Warehouse is the one to blame for this cleanup. I think Warehouse needs to come to the plate and clean this up. I don't think it should take one, two, five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years to clean up the mill property. They made the mess, they cleaned it up. I feel, maybe if I'm wrong, I'm opening suggestions that we're, we're just spinning wheels on a local level. I think we need to go up to the top of the food chain from the state top. It's the governor. I don't care who it is. Instead, we've had enough. This needs to be cleaned up. Okay, enough's enough.
I guess, and I don't disagree with you. I, I don't disagree with you. Um, it's just that I don't feel like we are in a better place today than we were two months ago or six months ago. I just don't think we're making any headway.
No, we're not.
And if we put everything on the wall and categorize it as a priority list, is this particular project our number one priority? Is it our number two priority? Is it our number three priority? Where is it on that priority list? And since we're not making headway, we're actually, our relationship's worse. Um, maybe, maybe we need to reassess that.
You talk about downtown is an ice store and I agree 100%. If you drive through town, take a look at your left, it's an ice store. Look at the mill property. We have a lot of ice stores. Again, I mean, I mean, yeah, we can't tackle the whole entire world. But if we can get somebody that's willing to come in and put a hotel and a restaurant in and get the four-lane highway moved through because if it was ready to move forward, how about getting our jamboree grounds established? How about a lot of things that will help our economic position, which would help our downtown. We bring businesses in because they want to come to town because there's a lot of economic growth going on in our community. So it kind of evolved with everything we do, kind of all circled right back around. It will help our downtown. If we can improve our mill property and everything else we're trying to accomplish. So honestly, we need to, someone needs to put a stop to Warehouse or just take initially a little time. We need somebody to say, okay, enough's enough. Enough time. And county commissioners, and we'll set it right there in that meeting, he's not going to buck Warehouse because they create all these jobs and they do all this stuff for, for the county. So they're not going to strut anything. So you're never going to gain anything with county commissioners with this mill property. They'll just let it sit forever. They have their choice.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, it sounds like we're a victim of circumstance and I don't really appreciate being a victim. And so I think of things in a different way. If we want to stimulate our economic growth, why aren't we going and bidding on this property for the $5 or the $400,000 and investing the $500,000 into the cleanup because the return on that investment is between $6 and $12 million? And then we don't have to sit here and be a victim of circumstance. We take control of the situation, not allow our destiny to be controlled by other people and worry about Warehouse and the county commissioners and everybody else later.
We've talked about that. I agree and Greg, we discussed probably more in depth on that part. But that's an unknown question mark on the cleanup. We talked about taking ownership. They were going to give it to us. No cost.
Okay, so an unknown cost, a million dollars, $2 million?
It could be even five, 10, 15 million dollar environmental cleanup. We don't know.
Well, I think they said the estimate was like $700,000.
No, that was just the buildings.
Yeah, that was just the buildings.
When you talk about environmental cleanup, it could be millions of dollars, which we don't have. So we can't take on cleanup. That's why we didn't take ownership. They lost that. They don't go get it tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, they, they wanted to give that to us the first day. The first day that that property came open and it was contaminated, they wanted to give it to us that day.
They said, we'll do a sign.
Yeah. Yeah. But here's the thing for me, Mr. Mayor, is that first of all, they got caught. Okay, they got caught by not selling that property to the people that wanted to begin with. Okay, they got egg on their, on their face when they, when the, the thing came out in the mail. I mean, in the paper. Okay, so then they were not happy about that. And then we, then they came to us and which was a really good thing because I only had that happen twice. So they came and they talked to us and then guess what happened? They said this and they turned right around and backstabbed us. Saying, oh no, we didn't say that. Well, I want to tell you, I sent all three of them the paperwork about our meeting that day and it is perfectly clear that Roger Nyquist said, we will put it to auction. And seven of us said, that's what we want to do.
Well, that's what they're talking about now, just putting up an auction.
Now, but then they were, the next step was they were going to parcel it up. They came back and did the opposite of what they were going to do. Now they're turning around and say, we're just going to sell the property. They go back and forth.
I'm sorry, I don't trust them.
After they left our meeting, they went and they were going to parcel it up. They totally did the opposite of what they said they were going to do in our work team. Then they came back around when they realized that wasn't what we wanted. They went, now we're going to sell it all. So we've, that's the question is we just let them sell it all? I'm going to go? Or what do we want to do as a council, but as a council? But again, my, my feeling is I, I'm tired of dealing with, and again, our relationship is sour. I agree with that. It shouldn't. But on the same theme, I'm tired of dealing with, at the local level, someone's got to put Warehouse accountable and get this thing done. Why would, why should we kick this can down the road for all the other councils to have to deal with? Five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. That's my.
So if the commissioners aren't willing to work with Warehouse or any further, which I don't believe that's totally true, but why wouldn't we purchase the property and then be the ones to hold Warehouse accountable for ourselves?
So if you purchase the property, as soon as you take ownership, you are now a potentially liable party. And when there's not a, a note for their action order, 50 years down the road, someone does a soil sample and they find something, even when you don't own it, you're still liable. So that's for instance, why Warehouse is still on the hook because they bought it. Um, and so they are responsible for it, even though Warehouse never actually operated. But because they purchased it, they're automatically considered a potentially liable party.
Right. Yeah. So this goes to answer Councilor Gorley's question and this, these are related. You asked whether Warehouse, there was conflicting information whether Warehouse would continue to be liable or whether that would transfer to a new owner. It's, it doesn't transfer. You stay liable. The new owner also becomes liable. So the problem is, is that if another party comes in that becomes liable for the property, it puts less, it decreases pressure on Warehouse because they can then say, oh, well, there's this other liable party. They should be doing this. And, and they have, they have that argument on their side to, to basically be a reason not to do more cleanup. So it muddies the water when it comes to cleaning up. We, it is possible, if you, depending on how you structure an auction, it is possible to have uh, the, the bids be contingent upon a, this protective, protective, what is it?
PPA.
The PPA.
That's what the center is about.
Yeah. You know, but that's, the, the county chose to put this up for auction without any time for a PPA. They, they basically said, if this is, you know, the bid, the winning bid wins and then it's immediate and they got to sign it right then. That leaves no time, not enough time to do a PPA because it's a process through DEQ to get that, that protection. Or the.
So this is requesting the PPA to the commissioners.
So what this letter is saying is you need to give time for a PPA regardless of who actually purchases the property. You need to give time for a PPA because that ensures that the bidders who are most, uh, most suited to being able to, to develop the property successfully, so that they will participate. Because what you have is you have some people who know what they're doing and know about the risks of the environmental and then you have other people bidding on it that don't quite realize what they'd be getting into. And so my concern is not how much money necessarily that they have, but how much do they know? We've had all sorts of people contact us about the property, asking questions about what can be done on it. I've heard everything from housing to hemp farming to blueberries. And it's, there's a wide variety of ideas and it's amazing how ignorant people are about the environmental state of the property. And my fear is one of those folks being the high bidder that I haven't even talked to. Um, and they then become a liable party and then Warehouse is like, oh, I got another liable party here. I don't need to work so hard.
You think downtown's a nice store?
And then it comes back to the county again.
Yeah. Right.
And then again, the process isn't sped up, it's bogged down.
So council, we could, if the council said, why don't we buy it? You could do that. But we'd be, I couldn't, I don't think there's anybody who would advise the council to take possession of that property, including DEQ. Mary Camerata sat here in the work session and said, don't do it unless you get an NFA or a PPA.
So if we did request a PPA, that would give us an opportunity to get some sort of an estimate on a cost cleanup if we were interested or if you guys humor my crazy idea to purchase that and take control of this instead of blaming everybody else for not taking action, we could actually take control of it and have some time to figure out if it was possibility or not.
So the PPA would, would prospective purchaser agreement keeps you from becoming a potentially liable party. But it's a, it's a several, it can be a several month process.
Six months to a year.
Yeah, we did this to attain the North River property just to the north. We had to go through and do a phase one. We had to do a contaminated media management plan and then we had to get, um, the PPA. It was, it's, it's a process. It took time.
We asked them for this and they agreed to that. And during the course of the next year, we could humor me and see about how much it costs or whatever and see if more buyers come to the table that have a better awareness of what it takes to clean this up. And if they don't, and it's something that's advantageous for the city to take on, we would buy some more time.
Correct me, Mr. Mayor, if I'm wrong. Did she or did she not say that there's no guarantee that DEQ is going to be helpful for us anyway? Uh, because we don't have the pull that the county commissioners do.
DEQ basically said, it came to a level where her hands are now tied. The only way that would have to go above her. So in other words, you literally almost have to go to the governor and say, okay, we need to talk. Bring it down from there.
Let's get a new governor.
I mean, that's really an issue.
Yeah, I was. There's just too much danger from my standpoint.
Counselor, is our capacity as a staff?
It's way outside of our capacity.
And it's way outside of our, of our knowledge base.
Being a victim of the situation and we can always hire people that are smarter than us. So if it's beyond my capacity as a business owner or somebody that doesn't know what the heck I'm doing, I look for somebody smarter and pay them a good amount of money to get things done. So I just, I just feel very sad that the council has had to go through this for such a long time. And it's a crazy idea, but I think that it is something to look into rather than just have our destiny and fate of this property left to other people.
I would love to own the property if we had a.
I mean, I'd take it in the heartbeat if we could take the property. No, we're not liable.
I just don't know how much it costs. Nobody knows how much it costs. I understand, but I was told that we could just put asphalt over certain places and call it good. So I don't know if that's true or not. That's something that could be well worth researching to see.
Well, I think that the, I could, correct me if I'm wrong. The places that are, got blacktop on it right now, you don't have to do anything. But anything that's not have blacktop, you have to take care of. So you can put, you can put a building right on top of, we understood it, on the top of the blacktop. And there's a lot of it.
The level of mitigation in an environmental cleanup is oftentimes determined by the use of the property. So a residential piece of property is going to require higher levels of mitigation because they don't want children digging into contaminated dirt and kids eat dirt, right? For something that's commercial, it would be less. And, and so there are things where, yes, if your use is going to cap it, is what they call it, with asphalt, as long as that's going to be your eternal use, then you have a contaminated media management plan that says, hey, if you're going to disturb this ground, here's what you have to do. But then you can move forward. Which is why you need a master plan. Because the master plan determines the use of the property. And then when you determine the use of the property, DEQ will tell you the level of mitigation that you have to put into it.
We proposed twice a master plan.
We have, we have asked them on several occasions to do a master plan with us.
Well, I think this PPA is the only thing that could buy us some more time if we're so concerned with what's going to happen.
I agree with, I, I think the letter is not, is a good move. I personally, that's not the idea.
Well, no, I don't have a problem with that. I think there's a, I think, uh, to be fair, to let you know, at one time, this property would, could have come to us instead of coming. And so we wouldn't be having this conversation now at this rate, but, um, it was passed on. And so I think there are things that could be done to, um, mitigate some of this stuff. I under, I actually have compassion. Warehouse has a history and of socially being kind of naughty. And, um, they are also an employer and we need to make sure that people don't lose their jobs by creating unnecessary drama. But they also need to step up and we need to move forward on things. But, um, I, I have, as far as this letter goes, I have no problems with it. I'm agreeing with that.
Well, there's not much time to get there. Send that off. That's what we're going to do.
If, if, if your consensus out of this meeting, um, is that you're all okay with sending this letter, then we'll put it on letterhead. The mayor will sign it and we will get it to the Mesa.
Well, so this is requesting a bidder to be aware that a PPA is necessary, not necessarily requesting a PPA in advance. So.
I would read it and interpret it as requesting the county allow a bidder to get a PPA. So they would have a successful bidder and it would allowing them the contingency in their purchase agreement to get a PPA before it's finalized. to get a PPA before it's finally.
The thing is, there's about six buyers right now, who'll buy this tomorrow, if they have the time to do it.
What's the difference between allowing them to get a PPA or requiring them to get a PPA?
I, uh, requiring them would probably be even more, um, desirable, because if we could then know that the bidder has a clear understanding of the expectation of the property.
Well, Councilor, did, did, didn't they say that they would put that into their, oh, right? That they, they would put that into, that was the person that provided the property, is gonna be responsible for some of the cleanup or something to that effect?
Councilor Tucker mentioned that in the work session last fall.
Yes.
But then it was not included in the actual auction.
I got Manu to get off the table. And yeah, you're right, there was some discussions to that when you were over there, but I think.
Tucker basically told me that it's up to them to do their due diligence, or it's not, I don't think it's gonna end.
No amount of due diligence can get a PPA in this process that they're doing. It doesn't, it doesn't matter if the, if the mayor is trying to do it, they do not have enough time to do it.
Right now, as is word, they just wanna wash their hands. That's what my concern is on February four.
So, figure it, they wanna get rid of it as much as anybody else in this world. They've been fighting this for twelve years too. And it's to the best interest of the whole county. It's not like it's just about us or them particularly. Can we just, I think we just have to get it done right.
Developing those properties will be a huge impact on our.
It will be, absolutely.
So would you change the word, the commission require, instead of the commission consider? That bidder indicate a willingness to enter into a PPA?
Um, can you tell me where that is?
Fourth paragraph, first, well, yeah.
Is it second?
The city requests that in particular, the commission, instead of consider, the commission require that any bidder would indicate a willingness to enter into a PPA agreement?
Uh, require just any bidder to enter into?
Yeah, yeah.
We can change that, we got to the.
Well, is that strong enough though? I think that's a strong, I think that's much stronger.
Stronger than what it is now.
But it, what my concern about that would be that, that then it makes a requirement for anybody to successfully bid on the property, is that they have to be willing to, to do the PPA. Now, everybody should.
Yeah.
But if there's somebody who wants to move really fast, it, it would put a crimp in their plans.
It's taking back the control of our destiny by requiring the bidders to do this. So we're not left holding the bag again, and it goes back to the county, if the county would be on board with that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I recall correctly, they, they, the commissioners did agree that whatever our city list was of things that we felt were important for them, that's what they would consider also. However, that list never reached them, but this is a request. So, um, after sending the letter, I unfortunately not, I do not feel they'll pay any attention to it, but I request that we send the letter. I would have been part of the consensus.
We do the motion, I'm, I'm agree, I agree with that.
We got a consensus on that.
Yeah, I agree with, with the change, a little bit of changing the word.
Yeah, with the change in the word.
We'll do that.
You have a favor? Not, we will, we're having, there's, there's meaning.
One more to go.
This is a very unfortunate one to take down.